Um, wow, Mr. Dyer is coming up to the front row, making his way to the front row. I want to go ahead and present Commissioner Jimmy Keith, who is going to share the invocation with us tonight and make a special presentation.
I'm sorry. And make a special presentation to us tonight.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. It is really...
Excuse me.
Oh, okay.
You know what I forgot to do? Call the meeting to order.
Yes, kind of.
Okay, thank you. Now the meeting is called to order.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. It is a special day for me, and I appreciate the latitude you've given me because I get to celebrate my daughter Emily's, you know, finishing her kindergarten class. So as part of my pride, I've asked her class to come and help us out in the pledge. So after I leave us in a short invocation, I'm going to ask Emily's class, who is from New Century Elementary School, and Principal Mr. Keys is here, I believe, Mr. Keys, and their advisor, Ms. Batea. We have some of our teachers here. I know we have Sun Laucher, is she here? Sun Laucher, Chang Laucher, Ya Laucher, and Yang Laucher. These are our Chinese immersion teachers who are here, and this is, for the first time in Cumberland County, it is the first class of Mandarin immersion or Chinese immersion that is coming through. And if I understand correctly, there are only three of them in the state. So after the invocation and the pledge, I believe that they have a present that they would like to give us as commissioners. So that being said, if you would please stand and give the invocation. As power heads and give thanks. Thanks for granting us the wisdom and compassion and the understanding as we conduct the business of our county. And thank you for all our service members, our public servants, and all the men and women of faith who contribute to our community. In your name we pray, amen. So if I could ask the immersion class to come forward in the front of the first row, if you would. Okay, are we ready? All right, put a flag, please, and you start. Have you read?
I am ready.
With the little flag of the United States of America and two representative states, one nation, under God, and in the whole liberty of the world.
Are we going to have a little present for us? Turn this, turn this way. Turn this way. We have the cameras for all people to see on this way, okay?
If you're ready, come on, sing. Eyes on me, eyes on me. Ready?
Ready.
Stand up.
Ready.
One, two, three.
Just a minute, please. There are so many parents trying to take pictures. Would all the parents who are trying to take pictures come this way so you can take the pictures that you are trying to take? All right? You may come stand up here, anywhere you want to stand. Come on up here and take pictures. Come on. Ask somebody who wants to stand, if you can. Come on.
Ready?
Ready.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three. Can I have an encore?
Whatever you think.
Okay, you remember "Listen to Mama"?
Yeah.
You just sing the chorus, one, two, three. Very good, very good. One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Mr. Keys, thank you for allowing the kids to come out for that, and I wish you a lot of success in the next classes that come. If, parents, if you were, if you were, you're free to leave now if you'd like to, but welcome to stay.
Mr. Keith, if you know the name of the instructors, it'd be good to mention them.
Ya Laucher, Lau Chang, Chang Laucher, Yang Laucher. I got it. Ni hao. Jimba, Jimba. Jimba means very good. That's the only entertainment I can give you. Thank you, Jeanette.
She said they would share pictures, so I won't worry about it.
Sunny, thanks. Appreciate it. There's one in there. She's actually Cantonese and not Mandarin, but yeah. I don't know what song this is.
All right. Next, we will have the, on the agenda is the public comment period.
We have speakers.
We have one speaker, yes ma'am. Our first speaker is Mr. Chris Mitchell.
Madam Chair, and City Council, and all of the other dignitaries, I just want to thank you all for this moment, and I'm representing the Joint Appearance Commission for the Appearance Awards Program. So you have, you should have a brochure right there, and I do have a few of them left. Just want to thank you all for appointing, first of all, appointing me, and then the representatives that you have from the county. And we have a spectacular program established for this year. With that being said, this is to recognize all of those that are making our communities look the way they do. So if you know anyone out there that has a landscaping project, it could be your neighbor, it could be your friend, it could be you. If you know someone that has a, you know, their home, they just keep it up, or a building that you like to go by, and it makes your heart say, yes, this is the right type of project, or that this is something that makes me feel better about driving faster appearance-wise, we just want you to actually make a comment, just make a phone call to the City Hall, and that number is actually 433-1612. So 433-1612 is one of the ways that you can actually submit your nominations for this year, Community Appearance Awards Program. This is first-class stuff, and we welcome in every one of you all to come. There's going to be some other dignitaries that are there, and it's all, it's a way of giving back to the people that are making our city, our county, look its best. Another point that I'm going to make is very, very important. The money that we do not have to spend because of everyday people is probably unnamorable because they, they do things like fix up their interests, their main entrances to their, their communities, and they're, they're fixing their landscaping, and their street cleanups, and things like that. So we just want to thank them and recognize them this year for what they do, and we appreciate all of you all, and your time is well spent. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We have no further speakers.
And next, we will go into recognitions. Commissioner Edge. Well, recognition of North Carolina Association of Student Council's Advisor of the Year. And then to the students elected.
Good evening to everyone. It's an honor for me to stand before you this, this evening, and to recognize our next generation of leaders. I am particularly honored to have this privilege this afternoon to recognize these students for their accomplishments. And as I call your name, in the interest of time, I would like for you just to come, and I will present you a certificate, and if you will stand here till everybody's been recognized, and then we'll give you further instructions. First, I would like to recognize Andrea Phillips, who is not a student, but is the North Carolina Association of Student Council's Advisor of the Year. Elections were held this, in late March, in Mount Erie, North Carolina, and Cumberland County did extremely well, and it speaks well for our high schools, and I'm proud of every one of these students. Jake Peed of Pine Forest High School was elected the Association's President for the 2014-15 school year. Congratulations. Jay Shea of Terry Sanford High School was named the President-elect for the 2014-15 school year. Rachel Britton of Cape Fear High School, I don't believe she's here. Haven't seen her. Is Rachel here? Anyway, she was elected first Vice President for the 2014-15 academic year. Dorian Wright of E. Smith High School was Communication Officer for the 2014-15 school year. Congratulations. Crystal Black of Grace Creek High School was a Central District Chair for the 2014-15 academic year. And Alex Shelley of Terry Sanford High School was the Central District Vice Chair for the 2014-15 academic year. Before I let them sit down and shake everybody's hand, the Association also recognized six Cumberland County Student Government Associations as Honor Councils. Those from Cumberland International Early College, Cross Creek Early College, Grace Creek, Pine Forest, Terry Sanford, and 71st High School were recognized as Honor Councils. Those schools, councils, along with the SGA's of Cape Fear, Jack Britt High School, and Massey Hill High School, were also recognized for their contributions to the Association's service project. And next year, Pine Forest will host the Association Conference for the 2006, no, I'm sorry, Pine Forest will host the Association Conference next year, and Terry Sanford will host it in 2016. Is that right? I got it right? All right. Congratulations to all of you, and we're very proud of you, and if you would, just go around and shake everybody's hand, because the commissioners, this is, this is your generation of future leaders. I believe there's some other advisors here from the other student councils that you would stand with. Thank you for being here and supporting these students.
Madam Clerk, do I call on Sally? Is Sally going to, they're going to just call the names, and they're going to stand?
Yes, please. The next item on our agenda is the recognition of our Cumberland County Citizens Academy Spring 2014 Graduates. These citizens have participated for at least once each week into sessions designed to help them understand county government. They have been intensive sessions, and from the comments that I have received, they have enjoyed it. We are also now having an open enrollment for the fall session of the Citizens Academy. So Madam Clerk, if you would please call their names. Is Ms. Shutt here?
Ms. Shutt is over here, and I believe you have a list of names, so you can recognize the graduates?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
If you would come forward, please, as I call your name. Ms. Rebecca Betts, is she present? Ms. Christine Bradbery, Serena Britton, Otis Coffey. Thank you. If you'll come forward. And Sheila Coffey. If you will, if you will come around, and we will recognize all of you. Would you stand, please? Thank you so much. Ms. Sherri Dawson. Thank you so much. And then Ms. Catherine Dees. Mr. Wilbur Dees. Mr. Eddie Edmonds. Mr. Perry Evans. Congratulations. Ms. Carla Fagan. Mr. Horace Humphrey. Congratulations. Mr. Alan Keller. Mr. Keller here. Mr. Richard Leslie. I know Mr. Melvin Lewis is here, I saw him. Mr. Tunde Lewis. Quentin McFatter, Mr. McFatter is here. Thank you. Congratulations. Vicky Mullins, congratulations. Ms. Melinda Murray. Ms. Rebecca Oski. And then Ms. Gail Riddle. Ms. Kiara Rouse. And then Ms. Betsy Small. Congratulations. Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you. Mr. Christopher Tackett. And Ms. Carmen Tolbar. One more. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. We wish to thank each of you, in a minute, for your participation and for your diligence and for sharing your time with us. I attended the first session. It was amazing. I think I got interrupted two or three times. Mr. Keith took over sometimes in mid-sentence for me and kept it rolling. But I definitely enjoyed my interaction with you. Now, I need to recognize Ms. Sheila Coffey. How do you pronounce your name?
Coffey.
Coffey, that is correct, Madam Chairman. Ms. Sheila Coffey, for some remarks.
Madam Chairman and Commissioners, it is my honor to stand before you. It was a privilege to attend the academy. We thoroughly enjoyed it, so I'm in, standing in for our class to recognize two individuals from the county that work very hard and that we truly appreciate. So I have two certificates of appreciation, one for Ms. Sally Shutt, and the other for John Soul.
Will the class please stand as she's doing this?
Yes, please.
Where's Sally?
And the certificate says, Certificate of Appreciation Award to Sally Shutt for Outstanding Service as our Coordinator of the Cumberland County Citizens Academy, Class Number Four. Your dedication to make Cumberland County citizens more acquainted with our county agencies goes beyond your everyday duties. We thank you for your hard work, communication, and heartfelt hospitality. You are a credit to your office, your community, and its citizens. We thank you. Awarded this day on May 19th, 2014.
And to John? Grippen grin, grippen grin.
John Souls, for outstanding service as Public Information Specialist, your dedication to the Cumberland County Citizens Academy is greatly appreciated. We thank you for your hard work and commitment. You are a credit to your office, your community, and its citizens.
Turn. Pose picture, please.
And for anyone who did not get a chance to sign Sally's, we can have it in the back and they can sign it. So we thank you all for this opportunity, and we will continue to let others know how great this program is, and we thank every agency that made themselves available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for participating, and thank you for your thoughtfulness. That's amazing. Wait a minute. We have one more recognition. I believe he has already received a couple this year, so... Let's not give him this. Let's not give him this. Come on, I believe this is his third. Mr. King is recognizing Buck Wilson.
The Center for Public Health Quality has invited Cumberland County Department of Public Health direct to Buck Wilson to serve on its advisory board. The center, which originated as part of the North Carolina Center for Public Health Quality, is a national resource for quality improvement among public health organizations. It provides quality improvement training and technical assistance programs to public health organizations nationally. In the invitation letter, Dr. Greg Randolph, the center's director, said, "Wilson's leadership experience and commitment to making a difference in the health and well-being of North Carolina is well-recognized and will be of great value to our future direction." The center, Randolph said, "Is focused on transforming North Carolina public health systems to be efficient and effective in a changing environment." Congratulations.
All right. I really appreciate the support. We have a tremendous staff at the Health Department. We work really hard to make sure that we're efficient and effective. And so I'm honored to be picked to serve on this committee, and thanks for everything.
Next item on the agenda is, I believe, the approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
And the next item will be the consent agenda.
Our motion approved.
Second.
Those in favor? You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. And now I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege, please. Mr. Edge, for special recognition.
I'll promise you, we'll get to the business before long. We save the best to the last. Under Jimmy Keith's leadership last year, we decided that we would recognize people that had reached the age of one hundred in this county. And there are many of them, some we have not recognized, but we have recognized a few. But tonight, I want to recognize a friend of mine, someone I've known for a long time, someone that has been very active in our community, somebody that has done some things, and I could go on and tell you all about them, but they're too numerous. We'd be here all night if I told you everything about him. But I do want to read this proclamation, and it will tell you some significant accomplishments of Joe Dyer. Whereas Joe Dyer, Joe Edward Dyer, was born in Hueysville, Kentucky on May the sixteenth, nineteen eleven, and whereas Joseph Edward Dyer graduated high school in nineteen thirty, attended Alice Lloyd Junior College, graduated Eastern Kentucky State Teachers College, and taught school for thirteen years. And whereas Joseph Edward Dyer married in nineteen fifty, and he and Patricia G. Dyer had two daughters, Susan and Robin. And whereas Joseph Edward Dyer's, and this is really important, folks, first teaching position was in a one-room schoolhouse in the Appalachian Mountains in Kentucky, in which he had sixty-two students, grades one through eight, for which he was paid sixty-two dollars a month. A little more, or a dollar a student. And whereas Joseph Dyer later taught high school science, chemistry, and physics, and coached basketball in Kentucky and Ohio. And whereas Joseph Edward Dyer graduated from Meteorology School in Chanute Field, Illinois, and served in World War II as a weather forecaster for the U.S. Army Air Corps in the European Theater. And whereas Joseph Edward Dyer settled in Fayetteville, North Carolina in nineteen forty-nine and operated a car rental service, furniture store, and real estate rental properties. And whereas Joseph Edward Dyer helped organize the Bonny Doon Volunteer Fire Department and served as chairman of the board. And whereas Joseph Edward Dyer helped establish the Seventy-First High School Athletic and Band Boosters Club and Citizenship Essay Contest on the Importance of Citizenship. And whereas Joseph Edward Dyer has been a member of Campground United Methodist Church for sixty years and a resident of Wells Place in the Seventy-First Township since nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-eight. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners do hereby extend to Joseph Edward Dyer sincere congratulations on his one-hundred-third birthday and best wishes for many more happy and productive years. Joe, can you make a round shake everybody's hand?
Some of our ordinary hundred here. I want you to tell me who you are instead of me telling you who I am.
We got it.
Okay.
Pleasure.
Pleasure.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all you have done for our county.
Good. This is a copy of the proclamation. If you enjoy, here's a little something in this bag for you, along with a Cumberland County pen. And I hope you will wear it proudly because you are definitely one of our best citizens. We appreciate it very much. Don't eat that now, Georgia. I should have recognized Pat, his wife. I didn't. I'm sorry.
She's hot. She's on my better hat. She's my better old.
And his neighbor, Mr. Vance.
No, this is Bob Lawrence.
Bob Lawrence, okay.
Yeah.
Bob, and thank you for bringing him down here. Enjoy what you're doing with him. And we appreciate your patience, all of you.
Thank you so much. As Mr. Edge is making his way back, Ms. Cannon, could you guide us through these cases, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item three are the uncontested rezoning cases.
I need to open the open the public hearing. Is that what I need to do? And are there any speakers?
We have one speaker signed up in favor in case P. fourteen eighteen, item three C. Otherwise, we have no speakers.
All right. Well, then we'll close the public hearing. Do we need to hear the speaker in favor?
No. The planning board recommended obviously to adopt the reasonableness statement and approve the rezoning.
Okay, and to approve the rezoning, since it is not in opposition to the recommendation, I will not. All right. What is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Fairclough.
I would move that we find the requests. Can we do them all at one time?
Yes, sir, as long as you identify that it's each one of those cases. Yes, sir.
In cases P. one fourteen, P. fourteen thirteen, P. fourteen fourteen, P. fourteen eighteen, P. fourteen nineteen, and P. fourteen twenty, that we find the request consistent with the land use plan and approve and adopt the reasonable statement.
Second. All right. You've heard the motion, the first motion. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
And...
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll take the second motion of approving the recommendation of the planning board on case P. one four dash thirteen, P. one four dash fourteen, P. one four dash eighteen, P. one four dash nineteen, and P. one four dash twenty.
Second.
You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Yes, ma'am. Item F is a contested rezoning case, and I'll read the zoning policy. Arguments by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of ten minutes for each side. If arguments are presented by a group representative, the argument should be limited to a maximum period of five minutes. If there are no group representatives present, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum time of three minutes until the ten-minute time limit is attained.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Case P. fourteen fifteen is the rezoning request of twenty acres from RR to R. seven point five. And just to refresh your memory, R. seven point five is the same as the old R. ten, which you see right to the north of this. Subject property is located along Blackbridge Road. Current zoning in the area consists of RR Rural Residential and to the north, R. ten Residential. Current land use course shows single-family housing in yellow with DW designating double-wide and SW single-wide, one being a church, and two, and this slide is very important, being a cemetery. That'll come into play in a second. Aerial view of the subject property will be served by PWC Water and Sewer. Now, I threw this slide in there because we'll probably be going through this a lot in the future. I know we have at the planning board meeting. But there's several areas of the county that you have growth, Camden Road, out in Grace Creek, and the, some of the arguments against any of these rezoneings are, one, at the planning board would be traffic, and of course, traffic as well as schools are going to be addressed, but they're reactionary. If you look at your data sheet, this is actually one of the good areas for schools because two of the schools listed aren't at capacity yet. So that was some of the opposition. Two, Blackbridge Road is identified on the highway plan as a major thoroughfare and ultimately be four lanes. It is priority one on the long-range transportation plan, so it is priority one on the long-range transportation plan. So the opposite, the planning board consider these oppositions, those which would be traffic and those which would be schools, which you're, you're gonna see almost every time there's a rezoning case up here. Three, the other phenomenon is the opposition of, there's enough people. Well, a lot of the opposition comes from the subdivision right there to the north that was just rezoned in itself, Steeplechase, that part of it, in two thousand and three. So you're gonna have areas of the county that are going to grow. Transportation will catch up. The schools will catch up. But, but again, to reiterate, you'll have areas, and I can remember years ago when Commissioner Blackwell said this out where he lived off Elliott Bridge Road, at one point in time, it's farmland. Then after a couple of subdivisions, you have growth. So with that being said, and the opposition you're gonna hear, the planning board recommended to adopt the reasonableness statement and approve this because it was consistent with the land use plan. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there speakers?
We do have speakers. We have two speakers in favor and three speakers in opposition.
Two speakers in favor.
Correct.
All right. And three in opposition. All right. Thank you. Ready? All right. I need to open the public hearing.
Our first speaker in favor is Scott Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Scott Brown, four oh nine Chicago Drive, Suite one twelve Fayetteville, North Carolina. Before I get started, I do have a question. There is one other person here speaking in favor. I would like to request that that person be allowed to speak after the opposition speaks so that we can answer or, I guess, respond to any, any questions that might be raised by the opposition. Is that possible?
Let me ask for a legal opinion on that, please.
You can set aside separate times to rebuttal, but you need to hear from both witnesses prior to the other folks speaking. They need to hear what's being said.
Okay.
All right. I need to hear both at this time.
Okay, I understand. As Mr. Lloyd put it just a few minutes ago, we are requesting a rezoning from... As Mr. Lloyd put it just a few minutes ago, we are requesting a rezoning from RR to R-7.5, which is the new R-10. R-10 no longer exists. As you can see, there are subdivisions or single-family zone and all around to the north, to the south, Blackbridge Road. We are looking at continuing that same type trend. It does follow the current land use plan. It was a staff recommendation as well as a unanimous approval by the planning board. If... Can you go back a couple of slides where the cemetery was at? If you see number... Circle there number two with the cemetery, I know a lot of concern from the opposition tonight you'll hear is going to be traffic, as Mr. Lloyd addressed a few minutes ago, as well as schools. But there will be no direct access to Steeplechase subdivision because we are blocked by that cemetery number two that's being shown there as you see it. The primary access or right now will be the only access to the subdivision would be along Blackbridge Road directly across there from Quarter Horse Run. Now, we have spoken with DOT in reference to this extension or proposed development. And I've actually got the traffic counts from 2012, and currently, we have a total of, or not currently now because it was 2012, but you have a 3,500 average daily count. That's near the intersection of Upchurch Road and Blackbridge Road. And you have 9,600 near the entrance of Fanny's Lake and Blackbridge Road. During the conversations with DOT as far as traffic, because it does make a huge difference to a project of this size of 20 acres, it's not a very big project. And you need to know upfront what improvements you're looking at as far as going into it so you can plan accordingly. As we were looking at... We are looking at road widening on this project, and right now, I know that we're not doing a conditional use, but we are having a total of about 49 to 52 lots. If you do the mathematics as far as the R-7.5, you'll get a total of 117 lots, which is not even possible based on the geometry, and they don't even give you any roads. So we are looking at a total of somewhere around 49 to 50 lots. We are looking at road widening for DOT as far as rest of traffic concern. And we're not asking for anything any more than what Steeplechase already has as far as lot sizes. We're looking at somewhere around an 80 by 130 lot. Thank you very much. And I'm here to answer questions if you have any at the end.
Our next speaker in favor is Watson Cavaness.
Thank you for your time. My name's Watson Cavaness. My address is 639 Executive Place, 28305, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I don't have a lot to add to what Scott said. I just wanted to be available to answer any questions y'all might have of the project. I've been developing here for over 15 years. We plan on doing a quality project. And I just wanted to be here to answer any questions you might have specifically to the project.
Mr. King, what size house are you building?
We're going to build a price point from 170 to 229 will probably be our high price point, and the house will be 1,700 feet to 3,000 feet.
17 to 3,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've been building in the Steeplechase Hope Mills subdivision for the last five years, and we've had good success there. We believe that demand is there. And that price point's been proven.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
If not, thank you.
I thank y'all for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Our first speaker in opposition is Elizabeth Cooper.
Commissioners, my name is Elizabeth Cooper. I live at 4413 Goldenrod Court in the Steeplechase subdivision. I've been there eight years. I have children who go to both, well, Rockfish Elementary, Hope Mills Middle School, and Massey Hill High School. I have in front of me a petition with 105 signatures from people in the Steeplechase subdivision against the rezoning of this property. We're contesting based on the fact that we have significant issues with traffic. The proponents that got up here and gave you your address don't live anywhere near Steeplechase and do not drive on Blackbridge or Golf View Road in the morning when they're trying to get their children to school. I can tell you, it can take 45 minutes to drive from Steeplechase subdivision to Main Street, which is less than two miles, especially with school buses and the traffic caused by all of the wonderful recreation opportunities we have down at the municipal park. If you add, when we went to the planning commission, they said there could be as many as 160 homes on these 20 acres. If you put 160 homes on Blackbridge Road, you are going to have congestion that is going to affect the quality of life of every voter that you have on Blacks Bridge and Golf View Road. It's not just Steeplechase subdivision. It's all the subdivisions along that road that have to deal with this traffic. And it's pretty outrageous at this point. This traffic is already a significant impediment to traffic flow in and around the fire department and police department, which are located at the intersection of Rockfish and Golf View Roads. That represents a public safety concern. I can have... If I could have my Steeplechase residents please rise. We have significant showing here of people against it, and this is just the people who could take time out of their day to come here and voice their objection. Thank you all. We also have an online petition with over 80 signatures against this rezoning. This represents a significant amount of your constituents, especially when 200 votes can make the difference about whether or not somebody gets elected. Additionally, the priority one in long range is listed on the proposed land use map as not being addressed till after the year 2040. Okay? This is 2014 right now. So 26 years from now, long after these homes have been put in, are they talking about widening Blacks Bridge and Golf View Road? By then, the traffic out there will be a significant safety hazard. To add another 160 homes and the families that would live in these homes to the populations that feed into Hope Mills Middle School, Southview Middle School, will be to cause those grades to come down even more. We are not meeting the standard as it is. And I can show you the things, the grade levels. It is already falling, and it's sad to see for a great community that we used to be, especially our schools. And finally, I would like to just briefly say that these petitions, I'm more than happy to hand over to anybody who needs a copy.
Thank you. Question from Mr. King.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cooper.
Who's on the map is Steeplechase?
Steeplechase is actually in the yellow right there. That is Steeplechase subdivision. And that first cul-de-sac right under the R-10, that's where I live.
R-10?
Right there where it says R-10 and that note down in the bottom, in the corner. Nope, over. R-10's right over my cul-de-sac. That's exactly where I live. It is definitely going to be an impact on me and my neighbors. And here's a brief little picture of where we already experienced traffic and where the police and fire department is. Okay? It is a significant safety hazard. And this is also from the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And in here, the circle, that indicates that we're not even being looked at till 2040.
Thank you. Mr. Edge?
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Do many of the children in there ride the school bus?
Yes. We have four packed. I mean packed, no room left on them. School buses going through Steeplechase subdivision. And that's just the elementary and middle school. That's not even talking about the high school.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I want this for staff. I have a question for staff.
Mr. Madam Chair.
Mr. King.
Tom, if we're going from R-10 to R-7.5?
We're going from RR.
Madam, RR.
To R-7.5. We just changed.
What's the staff recommend... I mean, what's the reasoning behind that? I mean, if what she says is true, there'll be more cars in there, won't there?
Sure, just like Steeplechase added that many more cars when it went in. But that area was rezoned just 10 years ago to R-10.
But are we packing more houses in there? I mean, if you go to R-7.5, am I understanding this correct?
R-7.5 and R-10 are the same. We changed the ordinance because in the old ordinance, it amounted to one unit difference. It was R-10, and then every unit after that, once you got zero lot line, became 7,500. Once your lot line became established, all R-10 essentially is is really R-7.5 plus one unit.
How many houses can you put in there?
116.
Over 20 acres?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker in opposition is Jeanette Felvey.
Commissioners, I'm Jeanette Felvey. I live at 4416 Goldenrod Court, also in Steeplechase. To touch on the last thing that Elizabeth had just said, not only are the buses packed, but we also have other parents that are driving their children on top of the buses being packed. And what I'm actually up here to discuss is the transportation as far as sidewalks and things between our subdivision and the Hope Mills Recreation and Park area. There's no way for us to get our children to get there safely on bikes. We have a handicapped person that I know of for sure in my neighborhood that can't even walk. He's blind. He can't walk to the park with his children safely. Nobody can go on that road safely. I don't know if anybody drives on Golf View, but it's not a safe place for anybody to walk or ride bikes or anything. There's no sidewalks. There's been two fatalities within that area within the past year and some change. And like Beth said, that it's not looked at to build till 2014... 40, 2040 to be widened. And that's all I have today.
Are there questions? If not, thank you. Third speaker, please.
Our last speaker in favor is Nikki Torres.
In opposition.
In opposition.
I'm sorry, in opposition.
Hi, my name is Nikki Torres. I'm sorry, I'm sick, so bear with me. I live at 4479 Jockey Whiplane in Parkton. Not only am I a resident of Steeplechase, but also work in the real estate community, so I know the effects of what this is going to do. It has its good and it has its bad. The biggest thing is I am a parent of six children. I have kids in elementary, middle school, high school, and one coming up through the grades. I have a child that started going... We lived here... We've lived in Hope Mills seven years. I own a house behind Rockfish and Golf View Acres, and we moved to Steeplechase three years ago. I moved to this area because I love the stability of the neighborhood and I also love the school system. And I've seen in the six years since I had my daughter go to second grade to seeing the capacity of my child's class going from 18 or 19 to now 24, 25. I see them not hiring teachers, so the school's doing the best they can. But with doing the best they can, it is hurting our children and the education of our children that are growing up and that the reason we moved into this situation. As far as traffic, I'll be honest, you have to leave at 10 till 7 to get your kid to school by 7:20. It takes you literally 20 to 30 minutes to get two miles up the road. And I mean, to me, I don't know of any of you, but I live from Memphis, Tennessee, and I could get downtown in Memphis quicker than I can get to a red light in Hope Mills. And there's no way for them to do that. Adding more houses, all it's going to do, with all due respect to Cavaness, is yes, our subdivision is a prized possession. A lot of people like living out there. But building more homes, that's killing our property values because right now, we have seven foreclosures in our area as well as houses up for rent that aren't even being rented or taken care of because buyers... Sellers can't even sell their homes because they're steadily building new houses right on top of us. So you know, between the schools, between the traffic, all of that, and killing property values, like that's going to affect Hope Mills as a community because they can't handle the amount of kids. We have no like two full school buses and a half of a school bus that come into Steeplechase for our elementary school only. There altogether are seven school buses that come into that one subdivision. You're talking about 70 kids on a bus. You're talking about 490 kids in one subdivision as of today. Not talking about people that drive. So we're asking you guys to take into consideration, we live there. If we really thought that it was the best thing for our neighborhood, we would welcome it. You know, more homes, more people. We're a great community. But you're talking about affecting our kids, talking about our livelihood, talking about where we live and where we chose to retire and to be and to make, you know, a stand. So that's why we're here, is because we want you guys to take that into consideration before y'all just open the door and say, yes, go ahead and do it. And I'm done.
Thank you. Are there questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from any of the speakers? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, fellow commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I have a comment. Madam, first of all, I need to... I think I need to address something that was said earlier. Threats to the commission don't work very well. It's kind of condescending. I think all of us do what we do based on the information we have and what's best for the entire community. So when you throw out threats like that, they're not really taken very... They're not handled very well because all of us, I believe, have a little bit more integrity than that. And then the opposition would say, oh, they only voted that way to get elected. So that being said, I'm also being a little... I'm listening to some of the arguments and based upon 10 years ago, I'm sure that some of the landowners out there had the exact same arguments about all these houses. We're going to come up here and they're going to take away what the nice area that we have, and it's going to cause a a more traffic and more problems and more crime. And what I'm hearing here is we don't have a density problem. We've got a road problem. Because if I'm not mistaken, Tom, and I don't know if you can answer this for me, how much road improvement has been done out there in the last 10 years? So what you're telling me, then, for the residents that are out there now, is this was a problem. If it's taken you 45 minutes to get two miles, that's a road problem before you ever built. And now, your neighborhood caused that problem as much as anything else. So you know, I'm still listening to what's going on, and I've read the information. But there is that thought process out that we've got ours now, so nobody else can get it, just in my opinion. So that being said, Madam Chair, I'm finished.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know what? I really have to agree with Commissioner Keith on this one, on the comments that he made. I've always been one that bid for a community. I think that people move where they want to move because that's where they want to be. But when someone starts threatening you and talking about so many votes and things of that nature, you lose me. You lose me. And I just... I had to say this, Madam Chair, and I'm sorry, but I just didn't like that. I didn't like it at all. You don't come and tell us that we have X number of votes there and that you should support us because you have X number of votes. You vote for what is right. You vote for what is right. I understand the dilemma that you face, and I sympathize with it. But what happened was, when that threat came in, it threw a whole nother spear into it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Fairclough?
Tom, I guess this is for you. The question I have, the material states that public water and sewer are available to the subject property. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, it'll be served by PWC Water and Sewer. PWC.
At out-of-city rates?
I would imagine, yes.
Okay. This is just outside the city limits of Hope Mills, is that correct?
Correct.
Ms. Edge?
Madam Chair, I I don't live too far from there. And yes, traffic is a problem in that area. Yes, it takes a little longer than usual to travel the roads. It is particularly at school time. I do know this. I know that there's been more schools built in the Southview area than any other part of the county in the last 10 years. And it's going to continue to be a problem because the people have not stepped up as far as the roads are concerned. I would like to share with those that are concerned that there are many things we do as a commissioner. And one of the most... And one of the most difficult tasks that I have, and I can only speak for myself, is zoning cases. And zoning cases are somebody leaves happy and somebody leaves mad. That's the way it's always been, that's the way it always will be. And as a couple of commissioners have already alluded to, if I served in this position for for who told me that they would vote for me, or who wouldn't vote for me, or if I approved their zoning case, then I am not worth being elected anyway. So I have to do what I feel is is in the right thing to do. Just down the road from you, just a couple of years ago, in the Camden Woods area, which is behind the Jack Britt area, we had a similar case that was concerned greatly about commercial development. And they didn't want anything close to their house in the way of commercials because of the traffic, again, that they didn't mention in schools. And you can see what has happened in that area. And one other thing I'd like to share with you, and I did serve on the school board for six years before I became a commissioner. And the rule of thumb then was that for every two houses we had in a community, you would get one student out of that out of those two houses. So if you're gonna have a hundred and sixteen houses, you're talking about fifty-eight students. If that's still true, and I would guess it's close to being true, you can check with Mr. Tim Kinlaw, and he probably can tell you that. And that means about nineteen per school. Elementary, nineteen for middle, and nineteen for high school. Which is not going to be a terrible burden on any of those schools at this time. Now, if it continues, grants you, those schools are gonna grow unless there's some redistricting. And that's not our problem, that's the school board's problem for redistricting. And it's something they don't like to do, because you don't want your child move from one area to another area. And so, that's always a problem. I think that that I understand your concern about the traffic, about the safety issue. Gosh, I hate to, to even go through the intersection there at the the community center. Anytime you go by there, it's crowded. But I don't know of any solution to the problem, and I can't turn I can't vote against a zoning case because there's a lot of traffic there, because I can move two or three miles down the road, and I can tell you that the intersection of Lakewood and Rockfish Road is terribly bad. And particularly bad when school starts in the morning. Or I can move down to the other end where Fisher Road and Lakewood Road come together, and I can tell you that is a terrible situation. When I have an eight-thirty meeting down here, what I have to do is leave about fifteen minutes earlier than I do the other way. And many times, I will go out the back way to the Rayford Road and come down to the courthouse because of the congestion at the schools. So I sympathize with you. You probably don't like what I've said, and I'm going to make a motion, Madam Chair, if it's inappropriate, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve and adopt the consistency and reasonable statements was approved by the planning board.
Second.
Heard it's been moved, and you've heard the motion in the second. Those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Melvin Edge, Chairman Counsel, Faircloth and Keith, voting in opposition. Commissioner King.
And I also would make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve R-75 Residential District.
Second.
Second. You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Melvin Edge, Chairman Counsel, Commissioners Faircloth and Keith, voting in opposition. Commissioner King.
Thank you. Next, we've
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is the minimum housing code enforcement case. Cases GHI and J.
GHI
and J. As well as KLM and N. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready with the I'm sorry, let me find my way.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Hatcher, I mean, this is a mobile, these first four cases that the county manager identified is a mobile home park with about over over twenty units, but I think there are fifteen that are subject to these hearings, and I'd like for Mr., make sure that Mr. Hatcher lets the board know that how this is broken down. He's doing it by the four separate parcels, the tracks of land, but there are multiple units on each of those parcels.
Commissioners, our section's been able to be proactive over the last year in our duty of enforcing county codes. And this first case is a collaboration of efforts of the code enforcement and Sheriff's Department and their Sheriff's Department's nuisance abatement team. It involves fifteen dilapidated mobile homes on four separate lots, all belonging to the same property owner. The property owners were legally served and forwarded to hearing. An order was issued and a compliance date given. As of this date, required corrective action has not been complied with. The mobile homes are considered dilapidated in that the cost of repair exceeds fifty percent of their current value. The first case was MH413, 2013. Property owner Charles and Rosalyn Dent at 1326 Davis Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina, involved six units on one track. This is the first unit on that track. The heating systems and air conditioning systems in these units are not working. It's making the tenants use window units and space heaters, which are causing unsafe situation. There's unapproved plumbing, unsafe electrical systems, and filth involved in these units. And that's your first case, 413, 2013.
Mr. Hatcher, let me clarify for the record. The description that you made of these units, that was for each of the units, they all had electrical problems, unapproved plumbing?
Yes, sir. The pictures you saw were typical of all the units. Our next case is 1415, 2013. Same property owners, Charles and Rosalyn Dent, and this track is located at 1371 Davis Street. There's one unit on this parcel. That's unit to the left. Once again, you see raw sewage being dumped out onto the ground. Our third track is case number 412, 2013. Property owners are the same. This is located on Peel Street. There's four units on this track. Once again, you have your heating and
Madam Chair, next question. When the county attorney asked, there are more mobile homes on these tracks
Yes, sir.
that we're looking at right now, so we're only, you're not saying the whole track is out, we're just singling out the bad ones, correct?
There's twenty-eight units on these four tracks, and we're addressing fifteen tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And our last track is Minimum House Case 401, 2013. Charles and Rosalyn Dent, property owners, this is identified as 5733 Peel Street. There's four units on this track. This actually is accessed off of Shaw Road. Yes, sir.
Yes, I was trying to interrupt you, but I'm just, 'cause I'm follow-up on Commissioner Keith's question there. There's more, you said twenty-eight, correct? And you're only addressing fifteen tonight. What happened to the others?
They're not within the realm of this violation of this nature. They're not condemnable.
They're not condemned?
They're habitable. Those trailers are habitable.
When you say habitable, at what, please, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but when you say habitable, what, habitable?
It meets the Minimum Housing Code of Cumberland County Minimum Housing Code.
So is it the bare minimum?
It meets the Minimum Housing Code.
Okay. Is it the bare minimum?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, if those that meet the bare minimum, how many residents do we have residing out there?
I don't have an idea of that.
You don't know? Okay, okay, okay.
Commissioner Evans, to maybe clarify a little further, are these twenty-eight mobile homes in this park, only fifteen, in Mr. Hatcher's opinion, are in violation of the Minimum Housing Code? And those are the only ones he can address. The others, other than these fifteen, in his opinion, do not are not in violation. That's the distinction.
Okay, Mr. Attorney.
Excuse me. They're not in violation enough to seek demolition. There is violations on those other properties, and they're being addressed.
Okay.
But we're not seeking demolition on those units. They're not of that nature, that extent.
At least not yet.
At least not yet.
Thank you.
At this time, right.
Well, and one more question, I'll be quiet. Lost my train of thought. Mr. Attorney, let me ask you this. Out of the, you do not have a clue as to how many people are residing out there?
In numbers, no, sir.
Okay, okay, that wasn't a question I was gonna ask, I lost my train of thought. Okay, thank you.
This particular unit right here was full of animal filth. And that's the last one of this four tracks. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got my train back. Quick question. When those houses are demolished or condemned, I mean, those are mobile homes, there would be no way that any other mobile home could come back into that property, correct?
No, sir. No, sir.
So the mobile homes can go back?
They can be replaced. We're, I believe the zoning is working on the conditions of the replacement. If they're gonna have to be brought up, the mobile home park may have to be brought up to current standards for mobile home parks at this point.
Okay, well, help me to understand, because I remember dealing with, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, please. Help me to understand, because if my memory serves me correctly, that at a certain age of mobile homes, once they're removed, or am I, tell me if I'm wrong, if they're a certain age and they're removed, then they can't be replaced, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
A 1976 mobile home doesn't meet our standards in this county anymore.
Okay, so how old is the mobile home?
They're eighty-ones, ninety-ones.
Thank you so much.
Quick question, follow-up. Tom. Tom Lloyd. Is this all on R6 property?
R6A.
It is R6A? Okay, thank you.
Any more information you have for us?
No, ma'am, we'd like to seek demolition on these fifteen units tonight, if you please.
Madam Chair, I think he does need to clarify the record. Mr. Hatcher, y'all have been, you said the owner of these parcels was afforded a hearing, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
When was that?
The hearing was held on eleventh of December, 2013.
Okay, and is your understanding that two of these parcels may have been sold to someone else at this point?
On May ninth, there was a deed of trust signed that has an unclear PIN number to us at this time. But however, there was a deed of trust that was changed. We have filed a less pendings on the property, so whoever had bought that property would be aware of this action.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there anybody in here that could tell me if there's anyone that's currently living in any of these residences that you're talking about demolishing?
At this time, we haven't been out on that property since, it was probably a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was. But I've heard that the property owner was seeking eviction on twenty of the tenants of these, of that park.
Okay, have they been notified of a possible demolition?
They are aware of this inspection. And I don't know about, I can't advise them of a demolition that we don't know that's gonna happen.
Okay, okay. So, take for instance, if it does happen tonight, if we do what we're we might do, or may not do.
Excuse me, all the people, all the trailers that we have up for demolition tonight are vacant.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Now, are there speakers?
We do have speakers. We have two speakers signed up in favor. One speaker, who is an attorney, signed up in opposition. Same speakers for all four cases.
Same speakers for all four cases. Two speakers.
Yes, two in favor, one in opposition.
Two in favor of demolition.
Madam Chair, there's another gentleman back here who says he didn't get signed up.
I'm actually Charles Dent.
Madam Chairman, will he be allowed to sign up?
Mr. Dent, you are the owner of these properties.
Yes, ma'am. For twenty-five years I've been owning these properties.
Twenty-five years?
First time we've ever had an issue with this.
First time of what now?
First time we ever had an issue with this street, so I don't know, I just don't know what's going on.
Didn't attend the hearing, yeah.
You did not attend the hearing?
Was not notified, Miss County, Madam County.
There was a signature.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Is there? Pardon me? All right, there might be a signature. Let me check through my through my there is a signature here. Charles Dent. There's a signature on each one of those. On each one of these properties. Yes.
Signature, meaning what?
Means that you, or somebody signed in your name. Signed your name, and it's certified mail on each one of these properties. Sir?
I live outside of Raleigh, and what's the word?
I don't know. It probably is gonna have very little bearing on the case.
Well, I can explain what's going on with the mobile homes that's vacant, and the issues with the mobile homes and the tenants who live there, and what they found as being problematic air conditioning units, not the houses you're not
Okay, sir, just a minute. Let me come on up, 'cause I want you to explain that raw sewage.
Have him sworn to, Madam Chair.
And you need to go ahead and be sworn in, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dent, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I do.
I'm not sure, I haven't faced this kind of situation before. So I'm gonna be asking the attorney, I probably shouldn't be recognizing you.
Please do, Madam Counsel.
Sir, it's not gonna make any difference to me.
Okay.
Because they got to go.
What's got to go?
Those properties must go, if you're talking to me. Okay?
Ma'am, but
Sir?
Sure, okay. They only show you some air conditioning units.
Sir, wait a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Let him sign up, so that we can do this nicely.
Thank you.
Let him sign up, and we will hear the owner of the property at the end of the, of the ones who are, are regularly scheduled to speak. Okay? Wait a minute, we got more people signing up? No, uh-uh, no. Only the owner. Only the owner, I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dent is, um, signing that list. I would, I would like to bring to the board's attention that with the Sheriff's Department Office, Sheriff's, uh, Office, they've had 700 calls for service at this property last year, and also the murder of a three-year-old child.
Do what, um, wait a minute, sir. Are you unaware of that too?
Yes, ma'am. There's a bad merger, this is one incident that just happened recently, just happened last week, so it's the first time it's happened.
All right. I'm trying to be nice. I am trying to be nice, because left up to me, it wouldn't be up here now. We would have already have demolished it.
I say condemn it all.
Can I, can I show you photos of?
No, I don't wanna see them. I don't wanna see them. I don't wanna see them. I don't wanna see them.
You don't think it's bad?
I am going to open the public hearing, get the deputies, thank you. I want one right up here behind me.
And you live in Raleigh, sir?
Stand right here, cause I need you.
No, 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 never mind, Madam Chair. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Open the public hearing.
Our first speaker in favor is Sheena Folsom.
Miss, would you spell it for me, please, honey?
Folsom, F-O-L-S-O-M. Uh, good evening, uh, I live at 5815 Holland Street. My house is directly in front of, uh, Davis Street, and, uh, every day, I have to deal with Davis Street and Peel Street. So I know everything that goes on. Everything. Most of those calls to the sheriff were from me. Me. He knows nothing that goes on at that trailer park. Nothing. There's dope boys running in and out of the trailer behind me. The third trailer just got busted in by the sheriff. I was there. I heard the, uh, the grenades go off. I ducked when the grenades went off, cause I thought somebody was shooting at me. But he knows nothing that goes on. The dope boys are fighting dogs in the back of the trailer, and I'm calling the animal control and the sheriff to come break it up. He knows nothing. He doesn't care. We've called him, he hangs up. They throw dirty diapers, trash, they tie dogs up in our woods. He doesn't care. I want all of Davis Street gone, not just 15 trailers, enough is enough. I'm tired of Davis Street. I'm tired of them. I wanna be safe in my neighborhood. I'm tired of them. He rents to crack mamas, hookers, prostitutes, they're walking up and down the road advertising. He doesn't care. He doesn't care. This is my neighborhood, not theirs. I came in this neighborhood in 2008. I cleaned up Holland Street, Bravo, Lovell. Those are our streets. And Davis Street stayed the same. It got worse. It got worse. Why? Because of Charles Dent. He's an absent landlord, he didn't care about anything that goes on, he'll rent to anything. The people that live behind me sell drugs. They throw their dirty diapers in my yard. How many times have I had to call the sheriff on them? And they just keep doing it. I'm just tired. I'm sick and I'm tired of Davis Street.
So am I.
And it needs to go. I wish it, I wish it was the trailers that people lived in that, that were going. Cause they're all, I've witnessed the trailer behind me, 1326 Davis Street. I witnessed them pulling the kitchen cabinets out of the kitchen and spraying them down for roaches. Literally. But there's nothing wrong with his trailers. They're nasty and they're raggedy, there's windows busted out of the third trailer that the police just run up into. There's people breaking in our houses, shooting our windows out. I'm so tired of it, I just wanna be safe. I wanna be able to walk away and leave my door unlocked and go next door, but no, people are breaking into my house. I'm tired of it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our second speaker in favor is Ms. Glenda Williams.
Thank you. I have been waiting for this moment for the last seven years. I have dealt with Davis Street since 2008. I took over property manager. This property has been in my family since the 50s, and it's been handed down. And I'm, I'm it that's, it handed down to, since my uncle got killed in 2008. We have fought, and fought, and fought these people. They have broke into all of my houses, they've shot windows out that I've replaced. I have called Mr. Dent on a number of occasions to complain about, uh, the trash that's being thrown onto my property, and, uh, he hangs up on me. Because he doesn't have time to deal with this. Call the police. And I have called the county many, many, many times. Kim Reeves was the first one that I dealt with that I continuously called. Deborah Johnson is my next one to go to, that I have continuously called. Uh, George, uh, I don't know his last name, but he deals with the trash, and I have continuously called him. Any resource that I could get, sheriffs, anybody, to deal with Davis Street. I'm tired of my houses being broke into, my windows shot out. My daughters live on this property, they're not, they don't feel safe. We've had to put dogs in the yard, put fences up, so that these people are not trying to get in. The drugs, prostitutes running through the woods naked, coming to my daughter's house. Can I use the phone, so I can get out of here? Because they've been, I guess, locked up in this house, or these trailers. It, it's ridiculous, the amount of mess that goes on in that, in that neighborhood over there. All my property runs right beside it, and they run right through, they've torn down all my fences. They've tied dogs up, thrown dead dogs over my, onto my property. Animal control has been called out there many, many, many times. And yet, Mr. Dent still does nothing. He is an absent, uncaring landlord. All he's about is a dollar. I, I, I watch my, my people. I, I rent, also. But my people have rules, and if they don't abide by my rules, they got to go. I'm not gonna play with them. I don't allow it on my property, and I don't think any landlord should allow it on their property. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Williams? Mr. Dent?
Madam.
Just a minute.
I'm sorry, we do have one speaker in opposition ahead of him. It's attorney Timothy Smith.
Thank you. Um, you can imagine, I have the, um, unenviable position of, of being a, an opponent. But the, the fact of the matter is, I represent Cristovol Cervantes. Uh, he's here today. He's a, uh, a South Carolina resident, and, um, he is in, in jeopardy of, of financial ruin over this situation. The reason is, uh, he's actually the owner. He, not Mr. Dent. In 2013, Mr. Dent, and I wish my client had had legal representation at that time, but he did not. Uh, Mr. Dent, um, entered into a contract with my client, who is, I contend, has some, um, not a legally sophisticated buyer, English is not his English, uh, his native language, but he paid Mr. Dent over $250,000 for the park, uh, towards a, a total sale amount of $450,000.
Wait a minute, come again? He paid Mr. Dent $250,000?
That's right.
When?
February 2013.
Bless his heart.
And the, the, the contract, which I have here today, states that, um, you know, he essentially, his understanding at that time was he was buying a mobile home park, and he will freely admit to the, to the board tonight that, uh, you know, it was a poor business decision. But, um, the, the mobile home park was to continue, um, under the operational control of Mr. Dent's employee. Uh, he was managing the property until he was fired by my client a week, I'm sorry, a month ago. And it, it was my client's understanding that, once the contract was entered, he became the owner of the property. He actually was paying the note, the bank note to the lender on behalf of Mr. Dent. Since that time, it's over $100,000. And his, he's, he throughout this whole process has not received any notice from the Board of Commissioners. Uh, he was unaware of any sort of inspections department activity. He became aware when there was, he became aware that there was criminal activity.
Please. Has he ever seen this property?
He has. He, he had been there, and his, his, his understanding that the property, um, was being rejuvenated. And he's actually, in the last two months, he has evicted 14 units. He has, there are writs tomorrow for six more evictions. And his goal is to, he believes, and we contend, that these trailers, although those pictures obviously look terrible, are salvageable. Uh, he's a, he's a contractor, and he's hired another contractor. He would like to change the entire, um, feel of the mobile home park, obviously. He's improved the roads already, he's already revamped the septic system out there. Uh, and his goal is to rename it. Uh, also, he does not lose his entire livelihood in this raw deal he had. He, he needs these trailers to not be demolished. Uh, if they are, then he wanted the opportunity to.
Mr. Smith? I know his time's up, but I had a question.
I know his time is up, but since I interrupted him, if you will.
Okay, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
If, if, if you will.
Okay.
Since I interrupted him, I'm sorry.
Um, and, and here, my contention is that he is already a far, far down the road in clearing out the property. It's actually cleaner now than it was a couple of months ago. And, and.
I'm sorry. I, I've just been up there. I, I, I drive by there, and.
And, and what, and what he would like the opportunity to do, because he never did get notice of, or having a, 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 a chance to appeal previously, is have the opportunity to, um, fix them, bring them up to code, clean out the property. He, he wants to purchase a fence with a, uh, mechanical gate, with a key entry. So, you know, there's a plan here to make this an entirely different development. And if 14 of the mobile homes, which are in disrepair now, are destroyed, um, then, you know, he's gonna have severe hardship financially. Um, so we are just asking, uh, obviously, we're at the board's mercy tonight because of the circumstances, but we're asking, under the circumstances, that there be an extension allowed, uh, to give him time to bring these things up to code, as would have been the case had he been notified as the, the record owner.
Thank you, sir. Please note that it's not automatic, that he would have been given time to bring them up to code.
Okay.
All right. Um, Mr. Everybody, I don't know who was.
I have a question for the attorney.
I know you were next, and then Ms. King.
Mine'll be, mine'll be real quick. Now, Mr. Smith, obviously, you're an attorney, and I'm not. But the only thing, is the only thing we have to go right now, that your client has any say-so in his property, is your word that he gave him 50, is this a recorded deed?
We have a recorded deed. Um, I have it here, if you'd like to see it, we also have a.
With, with the Cumberland County?
Yes, sir.
Registered deeds.
And the problem arose because he entered the contract in February 2013. The deed was recorded, and that's when the money exchanged hands. Um, the deed was recorded, and he's been paying the bank since that time. But the deed was recorded actually last week, when he realized there was.
Oh, goodness gracious. You are in an unenviable position. I don't envy you a bit, sir. Thank you so much.
Okay.
We appreciate it. Mr. King?
Madam Chairman, um, in, in view of this information that we have, might we have a conversation with our attorney?
What?
In closed session.
We still got a speaker.
In closed session? How can, um.
I'm just throwing it out, if we got some new information, and we might need to consult.
New information?
We got no speaker?
We've got another speaker.
I'll hold that back, I'll hold on for a minute.
I don't wanna hear a word you got to say. I don't wanna hear one word you got to say. No, I don't. I don't want to hear a word you got to say. But come on up here.
Can I pass this?
No.
Of the properties right next to my property?
Right next to your property? It doesn't, look, that doesn't have a darn thing to do with this, right here. Sir?
Um, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, this is for our attorney. Sir, and I know we as a, I know as, as a governmental body that we, we just don't do this, and I don't like doing it either. But with the way that this, this property has been a problem, it's been a problem, and still is at this current time, a problem for the citizens of Cumberland. There's been a number of issues going on over there, other beside, other than the trailers that we're talking about. And honestly, I don't even like thinking about this, but is there any way that we could, um, proclaim eminent domain on this particular property?
No, sir. Inspections is continuing to work this, I mean, this is 15, because these are the ones that they had ready to go right now, in terms of, but, but as, as Mr. Hatcher indicated, they're, they're, they haven't stopped working this case. So, so the, so the others are subject to coming back, back before you at a later date. But, no, we, the sheriff's office, met with the sheriff and, and, and Mr. Mitchell about, about a month ago. They were looking at doing, uh, a nuisance abatement action. I think, sir, that this is probably a more efficient way to address it than a nuisance abatement that goes into court with attorneys and can drag out. If you've seen some of the things that the city has done, this sometimes it takes a couple of years. So we're, we're, we're trying to address this as expeditiously as possible.
Okay, well, I, I just know that, sir, before you even speak, I can't believe that you have not, do not know anything about the 700 calls. I cannot believe that you do not know what an uproar that this community has caused in this particular area of town. I don't, but I can't believe that you don't know the pain and the suffering that the residents that lived there was going through. I can't believe it. And you do not live here.
But I have a business here in town, I've been here 25 years. And I live out of my business.
But that's besides the point, sir. You do not live here. You do not understand the problems that we have with criminal activity here.
Mr. Evans?
And, and one second, Mr. Dent, one second. And so if you have a business here, then you're aware of the crime rate that we have here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, I, it just amazes me that until this has happened, that you have not taken the time to rectify the problem that existed there.
Can I respond to anything?
All right. I'm gonna give you your three minutes.
Three minutes.
Mr. Dent, I'd like to administer the oath. I think I've already done that, but I'm going to do it again.
Yes, ma'am, do it twice.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I, I do, I do.
Thank you.
Mad, council members, I do apologize. I have been in the city's favor for 40 years, 20 years with Special Forces for Bragg. I bought a business on Bragg Boulevard, I bought this park 27 years ago. At the time, it was really dilapidated. The city of Cumberland County congratulated me on bringing that park up to speed. It was a drug-infested area when I first bought it. Only three mobile homes were back there, unpaved roads, no sewage at all, stopped water systems. I bought all of that in, put in paved roads, brought in newer model trailers. The mobile homes there are in 90 models, not the 70s, which up the street have. The ones you see that are bad are because the tenants were evicted. The ones you see that are bad are because the tenants were evicted, while they were being evicted, other unlicensed people who had not lived in the neighborhood came and moved in those houses and stayed there. We called the Cumberland, I called the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, myself several times to come and help me with the situation. They would not come to that area, it's short heights, it's, it's that part of town that, like you said, nobody wants to come to, they didn't want to come to help me clean it up, I couldn't do nothing, I couldn't do nothing. I went there myself, worked, I worked every, I worked every day in that park from sunup to sundown, cutting grass, fixing houses. There was never a tenant that had no heat or water in the house while I was living, while I was managing that park, not a single tenant. They couldn't pay the rent, I still let them stay as a landlord, I let them stay when they had problems, financial problems. Every house had air conditioner, every house had water and heat, there had one call the whole time I've been in that park to the city of Fayetteville or the county of Fayetteville about a problem. And then she, Ms. Joan came and she saw the house and she told the tenant there was nothing wrong with the house. So all this happened in the last six, eight months. I've been on that park for 27 years until I sold it to Mr. Sabatius when we came to an agreement about nine months ago, 10 months ago, for him to buy the park because I was tired, I, I couldn't afford to come and fix on it. But I worked every day, cutting grass, every tenant knew me by name. There was only a drug problem when some drug addicts came in and moved into the tenant's house and put him out and we called, I called the sheriff department, they specifically told me it's nothing they can do unless they can get somebody into the house to buy drugs. Dogs, I called, every time there was a bulldog in that particular park, I asked every tenant to call the sheriff department themselves. You called because you live there, if there's a drug dealer in town, you called, you called the sheriff department. And that, on every case, but those houses are in top-notch conditions for the exterior condition of them. You may, you saw some pictures of, of air conditioners, but the guy who bought the park is an air conditioning company, they are installing brand-new air conditioners in those units, air conditioning is not even a part of minimum housing at all. But I have done, we have, Mr. Evans, your son, all you guys, they know me, I'm there every day working on that park. For 27 years, I invested in that park, I bought those houses myself, everything there was a 1969 and older. I bought in 99s, 2000, 2001 units and put in that park and I worked. They can always show you the worst of the house, one picture of a decoded air conditioner, but we would, we've already remodeled most of the houses, they've been fixed up, we're working on every one of the units. The exteriors on those houses look better than any house, than any, most, most mobile home parks in Fayetteville. And yes, I sold the mobile, I was selling the mobile home park in appraisers for the city of Fayetteville, almost $600,000, in appraisers for that much. And we sold, we were selling with, with, with a decent amount of money for, just to pay off the loan notes with the banks, what I owed to the banks. So, so I know you said you weren't here when I had to say, but please listen to me, that, that mobile, and, and force they say, as trash been thrown on their side, their tenants throw trash on outside. It ain't just my guys throwing trash on their side, as a fence, they dump trash, they dump trash. They got dogs, my tenants had dogs. Stray dogs came from everywhere, we called, I would call every time a stray dog came to the community. We have trash pickup, we put in water meters on every house, we fix every septic system. I had the county come in, they told me to put in pump stations, I put in thousands of dollars of pump stations.
Okay, just a minute, just a minute, hold it, hold it. When did you take those pictures?
They were April, I believe.
Of 2014? 2014. Alright, 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 thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions, no questions, thank you.
Please ask a question.
Let you ask a question.
No, he had a question.
He doesn't have a question, no, he doesn't. He doesn't have a question.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, Mr. King, we have heard from everybody, is that right?
That is correct.
This is Mr. Cervantes, I represent, he'd like to speak to you since we have prolonged this call.
He had you and he's been here the whole time, right? We didn't know anything about, well, we saw, we, we've seen some of it. But all of you, everybody on that side is raising your hand to speak, so I'm going to have to rule right now that this hearing is going to be closed unless one of the commissioners has a direct question. I am sorry that he has spent his money, but he should have signed up to speak, this man was not here. Is it something I don't know, Mr. Attorney?
The only thing, and I'd like to address that, this, there's a question about the deed, that it was in fact recorded May the 7th. It identifies on the front page the four PIN numbers that are associated with these four parcels that are the subject of these hearings. However, there are only two parcels in the description, one of them I, I believe is in fact one of these parcels, the other, I have not been able to figure out what it is yet. So he, if the May the 7th deed is the only deed that's been recorded, Mr. Cervantes has not acquired ownership of all that property yet. I, that's, and Mr., we've all been aware of that and I advised Cecil to send Mr. Cervantes by certified mail notice of this last week, which he verified that he did.
Alright, did you send it to him?
Pardon me?
Did you send the information by certified mail last week?
Cecil.
All correspondence been sent to Mr. Cervantes, his name is on all the correspondence and it was mailed certified mail.
Question here.
Mr. Attorney, the, have you, have you seen the contract between Mr. Dent and Mr. Cervantes?
No, sir, I have not seen the contract, just the deed.
Can, let me, let me just ask, Tim, was that a contract for deed, what kind of deal was that?
It's, well, it's an offer to purchase, it's an offer to purchase which was signed by the parties, I'm sorry, well, signed by the, signed by the parties, Mr. Cervantes.
I'm not a real estate expert, but I've, I've been through some deals, okay? Was it a contract for deed or what kind of, what kind of transaction occurred between the two of you gentlemen?
Unfortunately, there wasn't a closing, there wasn't, there wasn't a deed exchange at that time, that's right. My, that, my client believed there had been and there hadn't been. So that, that led to him not being the owner of record, him not receiving any correspondence, or, he lives in Newberry, South Carolina, and him not having a hearing before today and so, that's our position today.
Alright, this is a very convoluted kind of situation. I don't see how he can be the owner when he has not paid for the property, don't see how deed could be recorded if, if the, if the property was not paid for. I don't understand, and in either case, what does that have to do with dilapidated trailers?
Well, he did, he did pay for the, the property, I mean, under their agreement, he, he paid for the property. Under the terms of agreement, he became the owner at that time, he would take over the deed of trust essentially with the bank, pay the bank, the lender. Unfortunately, that wasn't changed to his name, he, he, his, his arrangement was that he would pay on Mr. Dent's behalf, whereas he should have, there should have been a closing to the bank for the remaining debt owed on the property.
I don't envy you a bit in trying to, to untangle this, but that is not going to involve us tonight, okay? Thank you so much.
And Madam Chair, these, these 15 trailers, by, by no stretch of the imagination can they come anywhere close to being worth $250,000. So, so he's not losing the land, he's not losing the value of his property.
He's not losing the land, what he will keep is the land, these, these, according to what we've got, there is an estimate of about $500 a piece that he's going to be losing for these, these mobile homes. Are there any more questions, Mr. King, you wanted a closed session?
Well, if the attorney doesn't have, doesn't feel a need to consult-